Good evening. I want to thank you very much for coming out. It's a small group, but it's a powerful group, so thank you first of all. We are going to do this in two sessions. The first one will be District Three, which we have our two candidates, James Craig and Derek Guy, here for the event. I want to thank you guys again for attending. My name is Autumn Nagel. I'm with 15th District PTA. And it's very important that you get the issues out and that you know what your candidates stand for. It's very important that we vote on November 6th. And the only way you can do that is be an informed voter. So I want to thank you both for coming out and getting letting us get to know you more because you will be representing a very important part of our district. And I want to thank you for that. I also want to thank our volunteers who are here. There is food in the back, so if you're just watching on Facebook, you should come down. We have lots of food, cookies and also fruit. And so, lots of good food and pretzels. In addition, I want to thank Mr. Kevin Wheatley from WDRB. He's our education reporter and he's always got a really fair and balanced take on what's going on in the district and I appreciate his voice. And I want to thank him personally for doing this and I know that you guys are going to enjoy tonight. So if you have questions and would like to have them asked, there's no cards in the back. You write them on, you hold them up and we'll come and grab them and make sure that we give them up to him. Okay? So we're going to begin. Thank you.
No problem. Thank you. All right. Before we get the festivities started, I think it's only appropriate if we take a moment of silence to remember those lives that we lost yesterday in another senseless act of violence. All right. So as you heard Autumn say, you guys can submit any questions that you might have for James Craig and Derek Guy here. They are running to replace Lisa Willner in District Three.
Stephanie Horn.
Stephanie Horn in District Three. My apologies, it's been a long day. So yeah, feel free to go back and submit any questions that you might have. I'll read them and get their answers. And they're going to get one minute to introduce themselves, two minutes to answer the questions that I asked, you guys asked. We're going to try to get as many of them as we can. I've got a few of my own, so we'll try to get that as quickly and as efficiently as we can. Please turn off your cell phones or silence them, put them on vibrate. And if you guys could not display the campaign materials in any way during the forum, T-shirt button must be removed or covered up for the duration of this. And we're expecting all three of these to last about, or all two of these to last about three hours. I told you it's been a long day. Right now, we're hoping we're starting this one at six o'clock and District Six will begin at 7:30. And our timekeepers tonight are Perkins Boilery and Lakeisha George. And they will let you know when you have 30 seconds, 15 seconds, and when that dreaded red paper goes up, free to stop. And I will not be afraid to interrupt, so I'll try to let you complete your thoughts, but if things start going a little bit longer, I'll try to keep your times pretty short. So without further ado, we're going to start with Mr. Craig to get his opening statements.
Thank you, Kevin. Thank you for taking a moment of silence there to begin this. This is obviously a very tumultuous day in the life of the history of this community with another raceless and senseless act of violence. Thank you for saying that. Public education is the salve, I think, to what ails this community. And I'm glad that this event is proceeding this evening. And I'm thankful to the 15th District PTA for hosting this event, as I know that you do for each of the school board elections every two years. My name is James Craig. I'm an attorney in Louisville. I live in the Middletown community. I'm proud to be the father of two children in Jefferson County Public Schools. I'm glad that they're back there, Jackson and Katie, fifth grade and kindergarten at Middletown Elementary. Just joined our PTA again for the sixth year in a row and anticipating to be, I anticipate being a member there for the next 12 years. Excited to share the station with Mr. Guy and look forward to a good discussion. Thank you.
Mr. Guy.
Thank you, Kevin. My name is Derek Guy. I'm running for school board here in District Three. I am a social worker by trade. I've committed eight years of my life to working with the most at-risk students and kids in Jefferson County, so this is a hobby for me. This is my everyday in and out job. I appreciate being here. I appreciate the PTA putting this on for us. I have a five-year-old who is a new elementary school kid at Low Elementary. Before then, he was at Alex Kennedy over in Butchell, which was one of the schools that had a substantiation against it during our audit. That's why I decided to get involved and I'm really passionate about our early education and making sure we have therapeutic interventions in our school. So that's me.
All right. And we're going to alternate back and forth. First question is going to go to Mr. Guy. One of the things, the test scores for JCPS and other school districts across Kentucky were released earlier this fall. And one of the things that was not just an issue in JCPS but in other districts across the state was a growing achievement gap between white students and minority peers. What are some ways that you, as a prospective school board member, hope to close that achievement gap?
Well, I'd be hard pressed to say there's any way to close that gap. Realistically, there's always a socioeconomic gap between white and black people, so to say that there's a way to close it is unrealistic, but to help that gap, I don't particularly agree with assessment tools. I think assessment tools are rooted and written in racist tendencies. It doesn't really measure a kid's education. It measures how much they can retain for a short period of time just to take a test. It wastes a lot of time for teachers. It wastes a lot of time for kids. They don't really particularly like them. I like our Backpack for Success program. It's a portfolio system in which kids are allowed to invest their education in what they feel is important. A lot of school districts that are similar size to Louisville are moving away from assessment tools and more towards portfolio systems in which that's how a student's graded. It's more difficult for teachers because it is individualized teaching for each student, but I think that when kids have their own investments in their education and they're passionate about it, then that's how we really know what they're retaining and what they're learning and how they're going to use that in the future. There's a lot of critical thinking components to this. It does engage all of those basic skills like math, science, social studies, but it's also something that they can do particularly to theirselves, for themselves. Outside of that, I definitely think that we need funding across the board for it to be equal and to make sure that everyone has the same access to the same materials. So if we have schools in the East End who have better books, better software, then surely the West End is going to struggle more. So I definitely think that right across the board, we need to make sure we have equal funding for all the schools in our district.
Mr. Craig.
Thank you. Wise person recently said to me, to think about the achievement gap, you need to first acknowledge the opportunity gap that exists in the city of Louisville. There's a wide disparity between the haves and the have-nots in this community. I've spent the last four years on the Board of Directors for the Metropolitan Housing Coalition on its executive committee. It's an organization that studies racial disparities in the city of Louisville on housing. When you talk about the achievement gap, you have to first acknowledge the history of the city of Louisville. We're still a very racially segregated community. We're still a community that suffers from socioeconomic inequalities that are more pronounced than communities of comparable size. We have to acknowledge that there are reasons, sometimes beyond parents' controls, why students show up on the first day of kindergarten and they're not kindergarten-ready. I think I've said it a couple of times in these debates this week, I've always thought the best indicator of a student's success in JCPS is going to be the level of parental involvement that you see in the building from that particular family's parents. And we can track at Middletown Elementary, the students whose parents were actively involved in the PTA and on the SBDM and in their Massana kindergarten class, the success that those students have had throughout the life of their education, educational careers at Middletown Elementary. So we need to acknowledge what's really happening in this community, recognize that our teachers cannot be a cure-all, they cannot be social workers, they cannot be security officers, they are educators. But we need all hands on deck because regardless of the opportunity that the students in our community have, we need to accept all comers in Jefferson County Public School. I keep saying 82% of all school age eligible children in Jefferson County are sitting in a public school. The future of the city of Louisville is tied to JCPS's success and we need all hands on deck on this issue. Sorry. Keep going over. All we, sorry.
Thank you back. There's an audience question that wants to know what your thoughts are on the new racial equity policy that was passed by the school board.
Well, obviously, I'm a supporter. We, it can be a little frustrating that we're in 2018 and we're just now globally thinking about the racial equity policy, but the racial equity policy is going to be a critical tool act in the board's toolbox, I'm sorry, critical tool in the board's toolbox for the next several years, for all four years that, if I'm fortunate enough to be elected, that I serve on this board. And the committee that's been appointed needs the full support, full funding, whatever the committee needs from the board. Obviously, I'm a supporter and racial equity needs to be at the forefront of every decision that comes before the board. I also want to make sure that the community knows that if I'm lucky enough to be appointed, any recommendation that comes from the committee, we need to press Dr. Polio and all of the administration to implement as quickly as possible. Can't let another year go by without taking a serious look at the racial disparities that exist in JCPS.
Mr. Craig.
I particularly appreciate the racial equity policy. I am wary because Louisville has a way of being Louisville and they talk a lot and then nothing gets done. So I have always said going into this, if I'm a board member, I'm also going to be at those meetings, making sure that we are actually doing what we're saying we're going to do. I know that as I knock on doors in my district, I don't hear it, but when I hear it from my friends who live on the other side of town, oh, they've been talking about this racial equity forever. This is just a way to save face. We have a committee now, but this committee isn't going to do anything. So I'm really passionate about making sure that we have this committee, but we also follow through with what this community is supposed to be doing and that we actually put some policies into place that's going to be really good for our kids and hopefully give them a level playing field. Because when we look at these statistics, I continue to say, those statistics are, that's my child on that page, that's me on that page, that's my friends on that page. When we look at the disparity between Louisville and the racial divide, most of my friends live on the other side of town, so I definitely understand that in a way that unfortunately my competitor won't. So I definitely am passionate about that racial equity policy.
All right. So what is, are you for or against charter schools and why?
Oh, charter schools. I am definitely against charter schools. I've seen them do damaging things. I've said this from day one. You can follow my first interview. My opinion has not changed. I do not agree with them. They take funds away from our students. They definitely divide our students and they make it, I gotta look at charter schools like the Mean Girls out of Millennium, so if you've seen Mean Girls, it's like that table of like, you can sit here, but you're not really one of us. That's kind of how charter schools put our most at-risk students into their schools. So yes, they're there, but they're there on a scholarship. And as soon as they mess up, they're out of the doors. That's damaging, that's traumatic, and that's causing more trauma to kids who are already coming from traumatic backgrounds. I definitely think that we need to look at how we can fix our school system versus putting more schools into a system that is already chaotic as it is.
Mr. Craig.
No uncharter schools. I'm a strong opponent of charter schools in any way, shape or form. I do not want to see charter schools implemented in Jefferson County. I think the notion is incredibly harmful. We can start from a number of different perspectives on this issue, start with funding. We have seen a decrease in the funding that comes from Frankfurt to Jefferson County Public Schools. And now there's going to be a push in the legislative, in the legislature, not this year because it's not a budget session, but perhaps somebody tries to open it up. If not, we've got the budget session the following year. There's going to be a push to fund charter schools in Jefferson County. Before they're funded, every member of this board needs to be walking the halls of the legislature and lobbying each individual member of the General Assembly, not only to return the funding to Jefferson County Public Schools in the next budget, but to compensate Jefferson County Public Schools for the money that was taken out of budget before. Before we start talking about taking money from this district and giving it to a private company unknown, under the direction of some third party to manage our public schools, we need to do everything that we can to make sure that that funding stays here. Mr. Eddings has said several times in the debates this week, well, that's a, that's a red herring because it's really the individual students' money that goes from one school to another. But if you take a class size of 32 students, 32 students in Jackson's fifth grade class or 28 in Katie's kindergarten class, and you take two or three of them and move them to a different classroom, the teacher's salary doesn't go down by a proportionate amount. The teacher's salary is going to be the same. The cost of lighting the building is going to be the same. And every single penny that would take out of Jefferson County when we're already operating at such a bare threads level is going to be more harmful to this district. Charter schools are a threat to our funding. They're a threat to the future of public education. And as a board member, I'm going to do everything that I can to stop their implementation here.
Well, you might have a look at some of the questions I had because I was going to ask you guys what you saw, your view, your role as a potential board member, or the school board's role as charter school authorizer should be.
We have to follow the law. The law is until they're funded, there won't be an application for them. I'm not going to advocate for breaking any law that is passed by the General Assembly, but we also have to be advocates for the future of public education in Jefferson County. And charter schools are a threat to the future of public education in Jefferson County.
Mr. Craig. What do you see the school board's role as a charter school authorizer should be?
You know, I think the school board's role is always to put our kids first. And like Mr. Hens said, you know, we need to follow the law and make sure that we're not breaking any laws by being too openly opposed towards it. Is that something that's against the law? I don't know. I feel like we are in a country where you can pretty much say what you feel 900% of the time. So as a board member, I will always say, you know, I don't agree with charter schools. And I'm hoping that the board will be equally supportive with that. So that's really all I can say. I don't think we should play games with our, the future of our kids' education with this one.
And this is an audience question. If you were on the board when the state tried to take over, would you have voted for or against the settlement agreement?
I said this yesterday. My answer has stayed the same since the beginning. A lot of people said no. No, I would have said no. I 100% agree with Dr. Willner. She is the closest to anyone I can identify with on this board. She is a clinician. She has spent her life working with kids. I am therapeutically trained. I am a clinician. If someone is telling me that I don't think that this is a good idea, then I respect that and I support that. I don't think that there would have been any doubt in my mind going in there or any doubt for any of my constituents going in there. For me personally, they would have known if I said I was going to vote no going in, I'm going to vote no. I'm a man of my word. Third and third.
Mr. Craig.
This is obviously the toughest thing that the district has faced in several years. I've gone door to door. We've hit, as part of the campaign, thousands of houses in the third district already. When a voter comes to the door, they're educated on this issue and they're fired up about this issue. And they want to make sure that we retain local control over Jefferson County Public Schools and that we keep Frankfurt out of this boardroom. What is the best way to do this? The board fought long and hard with the state on these issues. We've watched the pictures that you were posting online, Kevin, of the meetings as they began and ended for several weeks. There was a lot that was going on, that was going on inside that boardroom that the public doesn't know about today. And we don't know about it today because the board is not legally allowed to publicly disclose significant portions of those discussions. They fought long and hard to the very bitter end. They made the decision on the very last day and it would have been the hardest possible decision I could have made. But I have the benefit of hindsight and I get to see what the corrective action plan looks like today and those board members didn't get to see or didn't know what it was going to be then. I have the breath of fresh air right now, knowing that I might be joining this board, not while it's in active litigation. I get to see now the philosophy and relationship that seems to be happening between Dr. Polio and Dr. Lewis. Today, it appears that voting yes on the settlement agreement was the right decision, but it would have been a really, really hard decision to make.
One of the things that's facing the district are aging facilities and some of the things that we talked about to potentially raise revenue for that is passing a revocable nickel tax dedicated strictly for facilities. As a prospective board member, would you support raising that sort of tax revenue for facilities to bring JCPS's facilities into a more modern age of the society?
Sure. Nobody wants to be involved in a campaign when they're promising to raise taxes, but JCPS is facing critical funding problems, partially created by the General Assembly. There are limited sources for the revenue that we have in Jefferson County. There's the possibility of a nickel tax. We have the right to raise without recall taxes on property, 4% each year. We get funding from the General Assembly, which is ever decreasing. And we have not raised taxes to the full 4% level on property over the last several years. I believe the last 4% raise was the first time that we went to the full 4% in three or four years. Now, I sat in the boardroom as Cordelia Hardens presented the last budget and we now see that we're several hundred million dollars in operating revenue behind what we need to have each year to run a district of this size as compared to our peer districts. Funding is the problem that we're facing and you started this based on infrastructure. Reviewing the budget, perhaps available online for the last several years, you see that infrastructure is the tiniest little sliver behind salaries and other budget items. Jefferson County is not spending very much on infrastructure. Having served four years on the MSD Board, we've spent tons of infrastructure and seeing the aging buildings in this community, it's hard to understand why we're not spending more. And so, no, I don't want to raise taxes. Will I support it? Absolutely. Unequivocally and unapologetically, we need to do something to improve the infrastructure in Jefferson County.
Mr. Guy.
So I always giggle when I get this question because it's such a privileged question. A lot of people don't know what property taxes are. I'm one of those people who don't own my house, so when we have that conversation of property tax, they're like, oh my God, this is so devastating. And on the East End, I hear it quite frequently and I'm like, I have no idea what context to put this in. So I've done more research about that, looked at how that looks for people's budgets and I get that it's a huge, huge money constraint on homes, but I also feel like our schools are suffering because we're not doing these things, because we're idly straddling the line on how to budget JCPS and the facilities here. My, my gut tells me that yes, I would always vote to increase it if we needed to, but my gut also tells me that if I'm increasing it, I'm making sure that it's going to the schools that need it. So yesterday, we had a huge conversation about Ballard High School and how Ballard feels like their facilities are struggling. And I'm like, have you seen some of the schools on the West End? Ballard's beautiful in comparison to some of the schools on the West End. They would kill for one of those schools. So I definitely feel like when we're looking at where those property increases are going, we need to make sure that the schools that need it are giving it versus just giving the money and putting money into sites of towns that don't need it.
Another thing that the school board is considering, will be considering, whoever wins this race is going to be on the school board when this comes up, is the question of a school security force at JCPS. And that's projected to be a multimillion dollar expense in the budget. Mr. Guy, how do you, do you support moving to a school security officer rather than contracting with local law enforcement for school resource officers?
Once again, same answer as I've been given on this. It's, yes, I support it as long as those people are properly trained. Officers with weapons or security people with weapons are triggering to students. They're triggering if students do not know what they're there for or if they're there, if they're just there for disciplinary techniques. I'm a huge believer in trauma-informed care. I practice it every day. I know what de-escalation can do for a kid. That one de-escalation technique could change that kid's life and rework their entire world just to have that one person talk to them and make sure that they're okay and talk them out of their anger. I definitely know that it's been the buzzword this election season, trauma-informed care. Resource officers are important, but mental health technicians are more important in my opinion. I think we need to fund those and we will probably see a decrease in behavior issues in JCPS. Right now, our budget took such a hit that many of my friends who are therapists were stuck with the decision of, do I go back down to bachelor level pay, although I'm a master's level clinician with 10-plus years, or do I leave the school that I love that needs me? Most of them had to leave and now those schools are having more behavioral issues. I don't think officers are going to be the way to change that. We definitely need to fund our mental health technicians in this field.
Mr. Craig.
I had a very similar answer last night. My wife, Jaclyn, is a division director for Centerstone and supervises a lot of the Centerstone therapists that are in each of the individual Jefferson County Public School buildings. And yes, it would be wonderful if we were able to fully fund therapists in each building because a lot of the security issues that we face, we would be able to de-escalate. But the question, between the two options, LMPD or an SRO, absolutely. I think SROs are a better way to go. The biggest question will be, as Mr. Guy said and as we both said each of the last two nights, is how are they are trained? They need to be trained in de-escalation techniques first and foremost. And if we have an SRO in an individual building that is trained in a de-escalation technique, that resources available to the principal and they're not required to call in LMPD when facing a security risk, the individual child's life is, is, it's going to be improved. The school's atmosphere is going to be improved. I also think the relationship that could be built between an SRO and each of the individual students in a given building is going to help that situation when a security risk arises. If it comes from a student and the SRO has an established relationship with that individual student, we're going to be able to resolve a lot of these situations before they even occur. A bigger concern for me is, are we going to harm them? Because I have to tell you, my daughter walking into her public kindergarten building is not going to feel safer there if she sees a gun at the front door every time that she walks in and out. So arming SROs in the elementary schools is a great concern and we have to take into consideration the fact that our black communities feel overpleased and are overpleased. And arming another retired LMPD officer in the building with them is not going to make them feel safe in their school. So all these things need to be taken into consideration and, see, I'm going to ask it again, at the forefront of the board's mind, I'm considering this issue from the board.
This is my last budget question. This is from one from the audience and I try to build toward it. One of the board's major responsibilities is the budget itself. How would you address budget shore calls if they occur?
I said earlier, we need to show up in Frankfurt. We need our money back first and foremost. We talked about raising property taxes earlier and I'm no fan of raising taxes, but we need to find additional revenue sources. If you don't find additional revenue, you have to cut your expenses. And I don't see many ways in Jefferson County Public Schools to cut expenses. Yes, we have a, we have a monstrous budget. It's 1.6 billion dollars, projected to go to 1.7 billion in the next budget year. But we have 101,000 students. We have 155 buildings, school buildings. We have 155 buildings, schools. We have 6,700 teachers. We're a huge district and a huge district is going to have a huge budget. And our teachers already feel stretched to the max. So, as I approach budget shortfalls as part of any working committee of the board or as part of the full seven-member board, my first instinct is going to see to be, can we fund more revenue? What can we get from Frankfurt and what other avenues in the community can we find to, to fund what we need?
Mr. Guy.
So, I've said this when I've done my research looking at similar cities. Grant funding is a huge thing that we are missing the ball on. There are a lot of larger cities that are using grant funding. Community funding is something that I've seen happen. Community funding is already happening in Louisville. And it's beautiful to see schools get donated sensory rooms because the budget's been cut. So, there are other ways to get the funds out there. James is all about going to lobby. I don't trust Frankfurt, so I won't be there. But that's just because we look very different. So, James can go to Frankfurt and not get arrested. Me, not so much, so I probably wouldn't. But I definitely think we do need to have that conversation of, why are you continuously cutting our budget if you are raising our expectations in JCPS? More people on this board can have that conversation. Chris and Chris can have that conversation. And Ben, they can go and sit down and they will probably get, get the audience that I would not get. My mindset is going in other forms to get that while we're figuring out lobbying. Lobbying takes a long time. Grant funding is something that can happen quickly.
I, I just have to ask you directly a question. But this board is chaired by an African-American woman. Do you still feel that you wouldn't have the same level of impact as an African-American man if you are a school board member?
No, I mean in Frankfurt. Those are two very different things.
Well, I mean, I'm sure she could talk to people. I mean, I don't think to say without that she is the chairwoman and she is an African-American woman. She's been to Frankfurt. She was at the Kentucky Department of Education when they were talking about things. So, you still feel like your race precludes you from being part of that conversation if there's something in Frankfurt that you feel strongly about?
Yes, because I've been to Frankfurt as well. I've done lobbying a lot. It's in my bio.
All right. Let's see. Are you an advocate for the PTA? If so, will you advocate for kids as well as school-based, the school-based councils in your district? Is that me? I think, I think that's, sorry, I think that's Mr. Guy's question.
I believe in PTAs. Me and my wife just turned, joined the Low Elementary PTA and it's amazing. They are the sweetest women. We're currently trying to get them to change their T-shirt though, because it's like basil pink and they love it. And I'm like, guys, come on, I don't look good in pink. The SDBM Board. So, I had never heard about this until my son joined Low Elementary. It is not something that many people know about. I definitely think that there needs to be more conversation with parents about, hey, this is a board and this board makes a lot of really important decisions. If I was not running for school board, I would have joined, joined them this year. But unfortunately, I can't. That's like double dipping right now. But it's an amazing board. I definitely think that people just don't know what they do and that education component is really, really important. So, I've been making sure that as I'm knocking on doors and talking to some people in my district who feel less heard, that I'm like, hey, have you looked into this at your school? Do you know who's on this board? Are you voting? I talked to our PTA chair the other day and she was like, most parents don't even get opposed when running for this board. They just end up on this board for four, eight, 10 years and here we are. And I'm like, are you kidding me? People just stay on this board forever and never get off? So, I definitely think that we need to educate the community on a better way to utilize this board.
Mr. Gray.
Thank you. The SBDM are, are critical bodies in Jefferson County Public Schools. That was my first level of involvement in JCPS. I ran in an election against four people for the Middletown Elementary SBDM. I was lucky enough to win twice with four contestants in the race. My wife Jaclyn in the back row joins us after having left Middletown's SBDM meeting for an emergency interview with a new staff member. She's serving her third year. It was an informative process for me. We started with a brand-new principal in our first year. And I got to sit next to him at these meetings as we, as he navigated, learning the process, I did as well. I'm glad that we have by law an avenue for our parents to be directly involved in the management of the individual decisions. And as a board member, I want to empower each of those SBDMs. I also want to empower our PTA. A wise person suggested to me last week that I should join each of the individual PTAs in the district. And that'll be one of the first things that I do if I'm lucky enough to be a board member. Eastern Ballard, Cammer, Crosby, Westport, all 10 of the elementary schools. I'll do my best to make a PTA meeting at each of those schools during my first year, pay the $5 and have a conversation with them about, what are your concerns? What do you see coming out of Van Nuys that you have a problem with? What can we do as a board to increase the level of participation, not only in your PTA, but in your building? Because as I said earlier, I think the level of involvement of a parent in a building is the best indicator of a child's success. So, whatever we can do to support the SBDMs and the PTAs, I'm here to help.
Describe how you would be an advocate for JCPS and public education. And this is an audience question and public is underlined, so.
Public education. I said earlier, 82% of our school-age eligible children are in a Jefferson County public building. And those children are the future of Jefferson County. How will I be an advocate beyond coming to the board meetings, besides going to the racial equity committee meetings, besides the PTA and the SBDMs? You will see me in the halls of Frankfurt. You will see me at metro council meetings. Whenever the discussion about public education is occurring in the city of Louisville, I and I hope another new board member, be it Mr. Eddings or Reverend Scholl, and the rest of the board members are there and part of the discussion. Mr. Brady is here. I see him at all these discussions and hope to follow his example in, in being a strong advocate for public education. I mean, public education is the South. If we're going to overcome the inequality in the city of Louisville, it's going to be public education. It's not going to be chasing more students out and increasing that 18% population number in our private schools. And it's not, it's not going to be charter schools. Charter schools are not the South.
Mr. Guy.
So, I definitely agree, making sure that I'm involved, making sure that I'm continuing to knock on doors. I always say that my canvassing is not going to stop if I get this position. I'm going to make sure I'm going back into the community monthly, weekly, to make sure that I'm like, hey, am I doing a good job for you? Do you think that I'm doing what's best for this district? I also think that it's really important to make sure that we're talking to our teachers. So, meeting them where they're at, whether that be at the bar after work because they have had a rough finals week and all of them have gotten together and they're like, what are you doing here, Derek? And I'm like, hey, just talking. Just, I'm a, I'm a personable guy. Just want to see what's up. How are you feeling? I'm, I value socialability. I love to talk to people. I love to make sure I'm a community advocate. So, for me, that's getting out there and meeting people and staying involved. So, I commit to always answering my phone calls, always responding to my emails. You're not going to not hear from me.
How will you ensure that you represent those families that are often marginalized or voiceless in our society?
I laugh because people call me the unicorn sometimes because like I'm black and I'm trans and there's like very few of us in this city. But I appreciate hearing this question because a lot of times it's just being here. It's just being here. It's just running. I have heard from some LYG kids this last weekend that made me really, really repassionate about my run right now of saying, Derek, you're, you're doing something crazy. Like, this is Kentucky. Black people barely run, let alone trans people. And I'm like, I'm, I'm here. I'm doing this and you can do this. So, if that means paving the way for other kids after me, I said this last night, there were thousands before MLK and they paved the way for MLK to get there. So, making sure that I am doing what I'm doing right now and I'm going back to these families and saying, I am your voice right now. I am that person that understands what you're going through. I've been through that eviction process. I've worked those four jobs and I know that it sucks to miss that parent-teacher conference. I don't believe that our students' success is measured by their parents' involvement because I've worked with a lot of parents who just can't get to the schools. So, I know what that looks like and it's heartbreaking for those parents. So, for me, those marginalized communities, talking to them and giving them a voice and being where I'm at right now, doing what I'm doing.
What are your thoughts on the Louisville Promise? And that starts off with Mr. Gray. Oh, wait, you didn't? Oh, sorry. I'm getting, I'm getting ahead of myself.
That's all right. How can I be an effective advocate for the marginalized portions of our community? You first acknowledge the realities that exist in our community and then you listen. We have, there are politicians in the state of Kentucky who are oblivious to what is happening in certain portions of our community. We have to acknowledge the racial inequities that exist in the city and acknowledge the social inequality that exists in the city. Recognize that when our students show up on their first day of kindergarten, that they're not all equal. And then you listen to them. Can't approach marginalized sections of our community and tell them what they need to be doing. Beyond that, we need to find creative board solutions to ensure that all marginalized portions of our community have a voice. I've told the story a couple of times about the Wilder PTA event that I've had. And the Wilder principal is now holding parent-teacher conferences in the Portland Community Center because a large portion of that building's population comes from the Portland neighborhood. It's, it's a wonderful idea and we need to acknowledge that other creative thinking like that, encourage creative thinking like that throughout the entire district. Thank you.
Now, what are your thoughts on Louisville Promise?
I'm sorry, I'm starting, can you explain further?
Louisville Promise and that is the program where, and this is an audience question, so if someone correct me if I'm wrong, it's a scholarship program between the city and the school.
Yes, so that all, so that we're going to pay for a two-year college degree for all graduating students. It's a phenomenal idea and I commend everybody who has worked to implement. I'm not sure on how it's being funded right now, but again, we need to be effective advocates in making sure that that promise is actually delivered to all of our students. Career and college readiness is an important part of what the board is dealing with these days. Making sure that our students are career and college, career-ready or college-ready. Go a long way to making sure that our relationship with the Kentucky Department of Education is not as rocky as it has been. Commend everyone who's brought it before the board and is working to push it forward. And as a board member, I'll be a strong and effective advocate for it.
Mr. Guy.
So, I told this story last night about the state of Kentucky has more kids in care than they've ever had before. And out of the kids who aged out last year, every kid who spends time in care in the state of Kentucky gets a four-year education for free within five years of them turning 18. 18% of those kids utilized that last year, which now the CPS and everyone up in Frankfurt are looking at, well, are we utilizing this program? Are people wanting to go to college? I appreciate Louisville Promise. I think it's an amazing idea. But I definitely think that Louisville's young adults have said, college may not be for me. So, making sure that we're funding equal programs. Like, if they want to go to trade school, is that a part of the Louisville Promise? Because if so, that's great. I believe in it. If not, then I want to figure out a way to include these trade school programs because that's more accepting and that allows for us to have that equity that we're talking about all the time.
Obviously, the hot topic locally is the student assignment plan at JCPS and busing students. One, that's one of the things that the school board is looking at, changing or altering part of the settlement with the state. What sort of changes would you like to see in the, in the JCPS student assignment plan?
I said it last night, I appreciate our student assignment plan. I think that parents really like it if they understand it. So, I think that we need to go back to the books in educating our parents and educating them on the different options that we have in Louisville. Because when you look at the city and the amount of public education we have, we literally have a school for everything. The showcase is amazing, but a lot of parents can't get to the showcase. So, educating parents to let them know the options they have would be my number-one change. Something I've heard from students, which I said it last night, it sounds really silly. A day of integration, they are really serious about this. They want a day to spend with kids that are not in their program. I think it's cute if they want to go hang out with the STEM program from the theater side. I get it. I was a theater kid, so I understand that it gets boring after a while if you spend with the same 50 kids through high school. So, that's like silly, but it's something that they ask for that's really easy to do.
Mr. Gray.
So, we were asked a question each of the last two nights and our answers will sound the same. Obviously, I'm a proponent of the student assignment plan. I'm an opponent of this vague notion that floats around Frankfurt every other legislative session called neighborhood schools because the concept has not acknowledged the realities of the city of Louisville, the history of this community or the history of this school district. Changes that I would make, we need to educate our, we need to be better communicators in educating the parents on what the student assignment plan really is. Thanks to Chief Justice Roberts, now we cannot have diversity as the only goal of the student assignment plan. But there, it is one of the most important goals and we're still allowed to have it be one of the most important goals in the student assignment plan. And I hope that diversity remains at the forefront of the student assignment plan regardless of whatever tweaks come out of the committee that Dr. Cole is chairing. It's really a busing question. It's being, busing is being thrown around in the mayoral campaign. Busing has this long negative connotation associated with it in the city of Louisville. A lot of that is a cost, it's an expense issue. We spend a significant amount on busing in the city of Louisville. And one mayoral candidate right now is advocating that if we were just to save, get rid of busing, we might be able to save so much money in Jefferson County Public Schools. It's a red herring. We have a 1.6 billion dollar budget because we're a huge district. We spend a lot of money on busing, but we only spend about 6% of the overall budget on busing. And yes, 6% of 1.6 billion dollars is a big number, but it is on par with most of the other districts in the state of Kentucky. Plus, you have to acknowledge that this is an infrastructure question. We don't have enough money to build new infrastructure in this, in our district right now. And frankly, we don't have buildings where these students are. So, unless we want to bond 20 or 30 billion dollars in new construction, which I'm sure this public will have a strong appetite for, the student assignment plan probably should remain in large part where it is today. Sorry.
That's okay. With the release of the test form results this fall, some of the things, we've seen the same list, or some of the same schools on the list of the lowest performing in the state, time and again here in the district. What are some of the strategies that you would, you would like to advocate for as a board member to get some of those schools that have been on that list of low-performing schools time and time again, get those off that list?
Obviously, we want, that is, that is a noble goal and it has to be a top goal for the board. But as I said earlier, we need to acknowledge the fact that our students come to us as they are and we cannot require our teachers to be therapists and security officers and everything else that we leave on their shoulders right now. Specific strategies, making sure that our, everyone in the building is a trauma-informed care advocate, understanding the background that these students have. I went with Dr. Polio when he gave a speech last Thursday night to the Jefferson County Public Schools. And he mentioned a stat that we've heard many, many times. And he mentioned a stat that we've heard many, many times, um, recently. We've got about six thousand homeless students in Jefferson County. Uh, we need to acknowledge the realities of the rest of the, how our students are coming to us. Trauma-informed care, it would be helpful, it's not gonna be the, the cure, uh, but perhaps it gets us there. Uh, focusing on the deeper learning initiative, uh, as part of the 2020 plan and making sure that in everything that comes before the board, everything that the board has been through recently with the Kentucky Department of Education fight, that we don't lose sight of where we were starting to move, uh, when Dr. Polio first came on. Uh, and ensuring that we're not relying too heavily on test scores, but on deeper learning. Meeting each individual child in the classroom where they are and not as a test number, uh, to advance their educational lives is critically important. And then racial equity. At the committee, uh, the racial equity committee, uh, recommendations, I'll say can't get to the board fast enough. Thank you.
Mr. Grant.
So lower-performing schools usually have some very similar things in common, poverty being one of them. So I definitely think that we need to look at what's affecting our schools and how we can help those students. So, you know, I keep saying this trauma-informed care thing, and Mr. Grant just spoke about it as well. But those mental health technicians and those behavioral coaches inside of our schools do wonders for those kids. Making sure that we're meeting our parents where they are as well. Sometimes that means calling a parent at nine o'clock when they have maybe an hour to get home before sleeping for a couple of hours to figure out what's going on with their kid. Um, I definitely think something that I love, and being a part of a big organization like Centerstone, they do a great job with this, is making sure that your employees feel appreciated. So if we can't pay you more, at least let you know that we appreciate you. And doing little things like, you can wear jeans on Friday, or I bought the whole school pizza. Just something to let them know that they are appreciated. Our teachers don't feel appreciated right now. Um, another thing that JCPS does a really good job of that I really love is every Friday in JCPS, there are a group of dads that go around to some of the most impoverished schools and stand outside and high-five the kids. And tell them how proud they are going into that school. Building our kids' self-esteem can do wonders for them. Cause sometimes the only safe place our kids have are their schools. So making sure that we're letting them know, this is a safe place for you, and we're glad that you're here, and we see that you're trying.
One of the, uh, one of the big things that happened over the summer, to be honest, take it, say, take it with a question, that's one thing, uh, was the relinquishment of the fifteen million dollar Head Start grant by the school board. How would you, uh, have voted in that situation? How would you rate the district's response, uh, to that decision?
You know, I would have agreed with the board with this one. I have a student who was a part of that Head Start program. And that program did a lot of trauma in our home. My son had weekly therapy dealing with some stuff that happened at his school, including not being able to get up to use the bathroom because they said stop talking. Like, those are the kind of things that were happening at some of these schools that were substantiated at. So I definitely agree with what the board did because that was for the best for our kids. To be an early Head Start student here in this district, you have to either have an IEP, or you have to be impoverished. Those are our most at-risk students. I know that a lot of people are struggling with this decision, but JCPS did not have it under control the way that it needed to be. I would love to see it come back. I would love to see early Head Start back in our schools. But we need to implement it correctly and make sure that we are holding the program accountable, holding the teachers accountable, making sure that we're getting the right teachers in the room, dealing with our most at-risk students.
Mr. Grant.
I have to acknowledge I wasn't in the boardroom when the discussion was held, and I don't know, uh, the thinking of each of the individual board members and why they voted the way that they did. Um, I think I told you, the very first conversation I had with you on the day that I filed for office, uh, was fresh off of the decision. Uh, I told you that I was a beneficiary of the Head Start program back in the early eighties, one of the first iterations of it in Jefferson County. Uh, and I'm sad to see it go. And thinking of, uh, we were talking about budget earlier, we're giving up fifteen million dollars in funding for the district. And we're gonna replace it with a program that we're gonna spend half as much on. Puts us about twenty-two or twenty-three million dollars behind where we were. And those, that's money that we don't have, uh, in the district right now. So, um, we couldn't get the program right, um, I would have been a strong advocate for continuing to push to make sure that we did get the program right, as I said to you in our first call.
What, uh, what measures can be implemented to help schools, uh, with any sorts of policy changes and programs more efficiently?
What can we do to make the schools run more efficiently? Well, I've heard Dr. Polio, uh, speak several times about the way that he views the district. We, he has said many times, we operate as if we're a hundred and fifty-five different independent contractors and wants to bring a vision to the district, um, to make it operate as one instead of a hundred and fifty-five different buildings. What can we do to help each of those, uh, in, one hundred and fifty-five independent contractors become part of a whole? I'm gonna look to Dr. Polio, uh, to implement that vision and make sure that he has everything that he needs. Be it support, be it oversight, uh, be it funding, um, you, you have to look to your leadership to implement your plan. Uh, he seems to be doing a good job and, um, obviously a huge support.
Mr. Grant.
Can you repeat the question, please?
What measure, sorry, what measures can be implemented to help schools with policy changes and programs, uh, more efficiently?
Support and education. I definitely think that if we're going to put something into place, a new policy, a new plan, making sure that everyone is in agreement when we do this. And if they're not in agreement, they at least understand what's happening. Um, a lot of times I find Louisville will like push the wagon and not have anyone holding on to it. And it'll go a little bit crazy, and people don't understand what's happening. And then we're surprised when it fails because we're not educating the people that we're doing this for. So I definitely, um, agree with supporting Dr. Polio, but also making sure that we're letting our staff know, this is what hap, this is what's happening, this is when it's happening, here's a timeline of how this is gonna happen. Instead of blindsiding them and putting new policies into place that they don't really have words to, so they can't really support. And then relating that to students makes it even more complicated.
What's your, what's your experience, what's, uh, what experience do you have with Jefferson County Public Schools?
Well, my son's in one, that's pretty much my number one experience. My son's been in a JCPS school in a very, two very different avenues. So as a kindergartner at Low and as an early Head Starter at Alex Kennedy. Um, my experience with JCPS has more so been in a social work component. I've come into schools, I've talked to a lot of different teachers, a lot of different parents, a lot of different counselors. I hear things as a social worker where you're like, that's not what I'm here for, but sure, you can fit to me right now. And hearing those things, now I have a better understanding of some of the concerns that our teachers, our families, and our students are having. Doing this every day, all day gives you a lot of insight to what you need to be doing from a bureaucratic standpoint.
Mr. Grant.
I mentioned earlier, uh, six years so far at Middletown Elementary, uh, with our two children. Uh, served two terms on the SBDM Council, Jaclyn serving her third term right now. I've been an active member in our PTA, I've been in the building at least once a month in some type of, in volunteer capacity. Uh, developed strong relationships with both the administrators and, uh, the teachers there. I'm honored to have the endorsement of the Jefferson County Teachers Association and wanna see JCPS thrive. Thank you.
One of the big questions, uh, that has been, has been asked, uh, recently has been how do you get kids to be more college and career ready? So if you're elected to the school board, what sort of policies would you support in order to improve college and career readiness for the seniors who are transitioning to that next level?
Well, you don't start with the seniors, of course, you start with the kindergartners, and you make sure that you've, uh, that they've had everything that they need over the life of their thirteen-year career in Jefferson County Public Schools. Uh, you don't lose sight of the, of the Vision 2020 and the deeper learning initiatives that have been, we're starting to push through in Jefferson County Public Schools. I'm also a big fan of the, uh, relationships we're developing with the business community at our academies throughout Jefferson County Public Schools. I wanna make sure that those are supported, um, and expanded wherever possible. And again, making sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that our individual students are not test scores. Uh, they're human beings, uh, each and human being comes to the table with a different set of experiences. Teaching the child instead of teaching to the test and getting the best score is gonna result in someone who's best prepared to, uh, leave JCPS and enter the workforce or go to school.
Mr. Grant.
I think number one is letting every student know, no matter what, that that is an option for them. A lot of our kids don't feel like that's an option, career or college readiness. Um, I definitely like our academies, I think that they're amazing. We're building partnerships with community members that will be long-lasting. But we're also getting kids into different aspects that they never thought was something that they could do. Um, I was fortunate enough to be a Big Brothers Big Sisters mentor and meet with one of the academies and see them interact with their UPS workers, and they were just loving it. And they were like, you know, I thought UPS was literally driving me in that truck all day with that weird romper and throwing out boxes. But there is so much more to this. So I definitely like that. I love that we have, um, a school of black males right now. I think that that is important. Um, Cory said it last night, and I a hundred percent agree, I would love to see a school of color for young women as well because a lot of times for inner-city kids, that's not an option. Um, I am a first full grad in my family. I am in a master's program right now, something that no one in my family ever thought to do. That's very generational for me. I'm right at that line where this is something new for my family. So having mentors out there where they can see this happening is a beautiful and a powerful thing for kids. Um, outside of that, you know, just supporting our system right now, the Vision 2020 is an amazing plan. I like it, but just making sure it's not a bunch of words that we don't put into action.
Are there any sorts of programs that you, that aren't at JCPS right now that you would like to see added, um, for the benefit of students?
So the only example I have of one of these programs did not do well, so I'm going to preference. I'm going to tell on myself and say it did not do well in Atlanta. But there was a LGBT school, it was important, it did a lot of amazing things for those students. Um, it did a lot of amazing things for LGBT staff who felt comfortable and safe in a school where they knew they weren't gonna be discriminated against. Um, being an LYG mentor, being involved with them for the last three years, this is something they're really passionate about. Um, our LGBT students in Louisville are four times more likely to commit suicide. That is a huge statistic. Every day on, um, Day of Remembrance, we have someone to remember in LYG. That's heartbreaking. And it's for the kids who are there and who have seen that, who have seen other kids get kicked on for no reason. So that is a program that I'm really, really passionate about. And if not something where it's its own school, making sure that every school has a gay straight alliance. It's important that every school has one and that that place be a safe place for LGBTQ kids.
Mr. Grant.
Those, the academies seem to be doing very well, um, I wanna make sure that they're fully supported. Reverend Scholl did mention last night, uh, his idea, or the idea that has been floated around for extending the, um, academy for, uh, female academy, and I would be fully supportive of that as well. I have to acknowledge in each of these debates, I have acknowledged in each of these debates, that I'm not an educator, I'm an attorney. Um, so I don't have ideas in the back of my mind to better teach our children. Um, I'm a supporter of teachers, though, and I wanna be, uh, an effective board member in listening to the teachers in JCPS, making sure that they're a sounding board at this board for every idea. Uh, and then, as I've said, all hands are on deck, uh, and that we don't, um, turn any idea away because we don't have the time to consider it. Thank you.
What sort of, uh, legislative policies would you like to see, or would you support as a board member on, uh, the board's legislative agenda?
Legislative agenda, we need the funding, um, we need our funding back, we need increased funding going forward. Um, I've said earlier that I support the repeal, uh, of the charter schools bill, uh, and I'll be an advocate for that each time that the topic comes up. Beyond that, um, making sure that, um, that there's an effective advocate for public education walking the halls of Frankfurt um, is incredibly important. Teachers in our community feel like there's a war on, uh, education. Um, this is the year of the teacher, and I wanna make sure that as a board member, every member of Frankfurt doesn't, uh, doesn't forget that, uh, we're strong advocates for our teachers and, uh, we won't back down. Thank you.
Mr. Grant.
Um, you know, piggybacking off of some of those legislative ideas, you know, charter schools, definitely no, I definitely disagree with those. Something that I keep hearing and I didn't hear until a couple of weeks ago, but since it's come up on my radar, it has come up a lot. Making sure our schools are a safe place for our immigrant students and not allowing ICE to come through our schools. That's really important, making sure it's a safe haven for our students. We are not a sanctuary school system, we are not, and we should be. Um, there's been a lot of push, are we? Are we now? Oh, thank you, good to know. We are, we are a sanctuary school system now, good to know. Uh, but there is still that fear. I have sat with a couple of students who have dealt with a lot of different things that I couldn't even imagine. So that's definitely something that's on my radar, especially because it's gonna keep coming up. This is Kentucky, it's, it's not something that's died. Outside of that, that's pretty much all the legislature I can think of.
And now it's time for you guys to give your closing comments. Uh, Mr. Grant, I'll start with you, you each have two minutes.
Two minutes to sum up why I'm running. That's, that's a tough one. You know, I came into this race for my son, and I stayed in this race for everyone beside my son. I'm pretty sure this rate my son's like, if you don't drop out, because I haven't seen you in days and I'm done with knocking on doors. But nevertheless, this is an important race. This is something that I am passionate about, this is my everyday work, this is something that I am committed to day in and day out. Um, I love kids, I've worked with kids my entire life. Um, and regardless of if Louisville thinks I'm the best fit for my district, my district deserves someone like me. Um, they deserve the, the black unicorn, as I like to call myself every once in a while because they need someone that they know isn't gonna back down from a fight, who's gonna be a man of his words, who you're never gonna wonder what I'm going to do because I'm always gonna be forthcoming and transparent with any decisions that I'm making. Um, I think that right now our board has a questionable image in the community. They have not always been transparent. That is not something that I will see myself doing. I never wanna be a part of something where someone thinks that I'm not being forthcoming. I definitely am passionate about this, I'm prepared for this. Many will say that I am the most qualified candidate because this is my training, but, you know, that's still to be debated. I hope that I get, um, the most votes, and if not, I am okay with losing to someone who equally loves and cares about kids. But that's what this district seat deserves.
Thank you for that, Eric. Uh, we've had a long week together, this is our third, uh, debate in a row. Uh, tomorrow night, I don't know what I'm gonna do, if you wanna get together for an hour. Thank you to the PTA for hosting this, thank you Kevin for moderating. I'm really excited, uh, about possibly joining this board and being a strong advocate for public education, um, in the city of Louisville. I, I think I'm the most experienced and the most qualified to join, um, I'm a small business owner, father of two JCPS parents. I was fortunate enough to serve previously as the chairman of the MSD Board when I went through a very tumultuous time in the, uh, life of the, life of that district. I served four years on the Citizens Commission on Police Accountability. I mentioned my- I mentioned my Metropolitan Housing Coalition Board of Directors service earlier. Currently have a little bit of education experience serving on the DeSalle's High School Board of Directors. I'm honored to have received the endorsement of the Jefferson County Teachers Association. Teachers need a strong advocate at the board and we need a strong advocate for public education in the city of Louisville. They frankly feel like they're under siege right now and I want them to know that I'll be a strong voice for them if I'm lucky enough to join this board. Thankful to have received the endorsement of the Fairness Campaign, who believes that I'll be an effective advocate for inclusivity in all things JCPS. The advocate, the endorsement of the realtors was nice knowing that I have support of the business community as well. This is a huge district that, as I've said already, but we can have the most positive impact on the future of the city of Louisville. We can have more of a positive impact on the future of the city of Louisville than any other organization. I've said I think that JCPS should be the crown jewel of this city and it should. I want people, when they hear JCPS, to not only think of the positive experience they have with their own teacher, their own classroom, their own school, but with the entire district. Thank you for hosting me. There it is.
All right. I'd like to thank both of our candidates here, James Crick and Jared Guy. Thank you guys for being here and thank you for the 15th District PTA for putting this on. And this is your final reminder to go vote on November 6th. Join the PTA.
I'm just going to add, there's still feedback there. Please help yourselves. I also want to thank both of you again for speaking with us. I really appreciate that. I felt really short. I don't want to move this mic. And lastly, thank you, Gabe, for doing the Periscope and the Facebook Live. I really appreciate it. So, at 7:30, we're going to start our next one for District, that's six, correct? District six at 7:30. So, thank you guys very much.